Good evening, late F. You also?
I'm sorry, everybody.
Okay, good evening. This is the meeting of the Select Board for June sixteenth, twenty twenty five. It is six P M. We are in the Lindy's Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording, please let Clerk Russ Anderson know. Um, go around the table.
Nicole Parker, C A O.
Diane Gale, Chair.
Doug Morgan, Russ Anderson.
Nadine Signoni.
Thank you. Um, Jessica, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here today with public comments? No one in the room? Anybody online? Looks like no. Okay, so moving right into business, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Board for our couple of appointments. However, we need one more person from the Planning Board to arrive in a twenty to twenty-five minutes. Um, so I just want to acknowledge that. And is it okay if we move that on the agenda a little bit? All good? Okay, so we'll come back to that shortly. Thank you. Um, and then let me jump into. Uh, we're going to do a couple of appointments here. Uh, we have Bob Sullivan, who is a, he is the current Assistant Building Inspector.
Deputy.
Deputy Building Inspector. He is from Granville. Um, so we have the opportunity to appoint him in the interim as the Building Inspector while we search for permanent replacements.
So he'll be taking the place day to day or as needed?
As, as needed. Which is many days.
Yeah.
Did this before, I think before Kyle Scott was hired.
Yeah, he filled in for a while now. I make a motion to a point.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Russ Anderson, yes.
Okay, then, we have the Hillside Road and South Loomis Street paving bid. This is what we talked about. I'm sorry, we did not talk about this one. We talked about this one some time ago, I believe. Um, do you want to give us the synopsis on this one, Randy?
Yeah, Randy Brown, DPO Director, I'll be open bids for paving Hillside Road and South Loomis Street a couple of weeks ago. Uh, you found them, I think the bid tab in front of you. Uh, so looking to where the contract's a little bitter, we're just on paving. Uh, their bid price was, uh, nine hundred seventy-five, no, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I thought that just went up for a second.
So this is a project that I last year. Uh, the work on Hillside Road, uh, drainage work was wrapping up. It might be done tomorrow. Uh, and so these roads are now ready to, they're paved. So I expect that this work will be done this fall.
Randy, on your, you bid on, right? We don't use any group purchasing for that?
That's correct.
Do we have that avenue available or not? And I know some of the counties, you know, will bid as a county when you get up in the Hampshire and Ham- Hampshire County and Franklin County. But I didn't know Camden County, we have any kind of group to plan your value planning or?
No, I, I like to bid them individually and you talk to a contractor. They would rather see them individually as well per project. I think we get much better pricing when we do that. When you bid a global contract like that, you know, you don't know where you're going to go. Contractor has no idea where it's going to be bidding. A lot of variables, a lot of unknowns. When you see that, you see that bid price is going to go up. So I, it's much more of a data machine, we can get a private, uh, with, with a nose code.
Does that mean instead of giving them a group of our projects, a, a bidder, a group of our projects, or what does that mean?
No, we're just talking about, uh, uh, co-op bids where like Franklin County has a co-op bid where they, they did pave it, right? So any, any community in Franklin County that piggyback on this contract and there's going to price for, you know, per foot of asphalt.
Okay.
Right.
Anybody in the county.
But then they can charge you for additional work on top of that?
Well, if it's beyond the scope for the, the bid, then I suppose they, they could, yeah, I guess.
The only plus side to what I've heard is their predictability, that you, that you can then lay out your road work knowing how much it's going to be by yard and et cetera. So we get a little bit better predictive rate, you know, going forward. But if the county doesn't have it, there isn't much choice.
Okay. Okay, um, you also mentioned that this had nine oh five available. Where was that source from?
Uh, I have a spreadsheet with me, but so over the years, um, so we have money from, this is the next item on the agenda, but we have money from town meeting appropriation. Your money from chapter ninety. There's a couple of extra supplemental funds for fair share and rural roadway. Uh, so we've used up, um, a lot of those funds and, and you know, I like, I like to estimate high with my estimates, but with this. So there's usually there's money left over, so we reallocate those.
So it came from all of those sources?
Yeah.
Okay, so the.
I do a spreadsheet which has, you know, where these funds are coming from, amount of the property.
Okay, yep. So the hundred and forty-eight excess, we'll call it, can be reallocated into this year's work.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I think last year we, it was like seven hundred or seven twenty for Hillside and South Loomis was half a million dollars.
Yeah, so that, that included the drainage work as well. So I think there was like one point four million dollars allocated for these two streets a year ago. Presumably the drainage work on both, that work is now complete. So we know what those costs are going to be ending at, and so the balance is what we can dedicate towards the paving, the paving work.
And that rolls forward into next fiscal year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So you need a motion to award the contract to Palmer Paving or cold in place paving on Hillside Road and South Loomis Street, full amount of seven hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Sir?
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Russ Anderson.
Okay, thank you. And then you can continue that discussion to the twenty twenty-six projects.
Yeah, so you have a list in front of you with first list summary of available funds for this upcoming year. So there's a million dollars allocated at town meeting. Thanks for your support on that. I did put a two D term in for chapter ninety. The state hasn't finalized its budget yet, so the chapter ninety funding has not been finalized. So, uh, last year we got three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars just for reference. But that number is not set, so I'm setting that aside for now. We also have some supplemental funding from more, uh, fair share program, eighty-three thousand dollars and a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from the rural roadway funding. Uh, the fair share was actually quite a drop from last year. Last year we were two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for rural road for fair share. This year eighty-three, uh, the, the rural roadway didn't change all that much. Uh, we do have some carrier, carrier funds from chapter ninety. Uh, and then also some carrier funds from the fair share that were not used. So those sources minus the chapter ninety, there's about one point four five million dollars available for the next round of projects. So further in the letter, I gave you a list of forty-five separate projects. Um, all I would say are well needed and deserved to be on the list. But, uh, the one point four five is not going to go that far. So we need to have discussion in terms of what projects you want to advance this stuff coming here. We have discussion every year. So I highlight, I highlighted, or I hold projects that I recommended. Uh, and those told just over one point two million dollars. But I'm also love to hear me back from the board to not allocate these most.
Yourself, sir. Um, so how are they determined? Um, one of the questions, when I see the roads that were highlighted, it doesn't seem like our busiest roads. I get some of them around, I get a whole from the nose that you look down, has some major stuff going on. But when I look at, you know, if you look the road up, it's basically at the town, it's very thick and age, but ninety percent of our our population traveling the Vine Hills, the, the, the Granville Roads, the South Long Yards, et cetera, North Long Yards. Seems like those should be priority based on traffic counts. But we're working on South Loomis is, is highlighted here, but not Vine Hill. We did, we've done half of it. We did more binding. Wouldn't we continue that? I'm just trying to.
We do have a paving in a program which we have to try to follow, which identifies projects and it does prioritize them partly based on, uh, the traffic volume.
Hmm.
Also the condition of the road as well. So I would say, you know, South Loomis Street is one that, you know, with the road was pretty poor condition.
Hmm.
Um, it is, we consider a main road, you know, just like binding mill, beating mills may not be as well traveled, but it's considered in our mind, in my mind, it's a main road. So that's how we've advanced these projects over the years. Um, the roads that I, that I recommended here, so Anoka Road was phase two. So last year we allocated funds for drainage and for tree work. And this phase two will complete the project, the paving.
Which that road's fairly expensive.
Yeah, and I'd recommend, so in the, again, that's not a main road, right?
Right.
That's probably the worst conditioned road on town, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Gargant Terrace, this is the third phase of this project, right? We did, we removed the sidewalk one year. You put a new sidewalk in this past year, and then now this is the third year, which I hope that we can finish the street and, and pave the road. Um, yeah, it's a dead end road, but, but certainly it's deserved to be, to be paved. Um, the other project, those are the only two paving projects I identified. There's other gray matches and crack sealing and some drains work here. But those are two that I recommended to move forward now. And then there is a little bit of money left over, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars that's still available in these two dollars. Plus the likely three seventy plus or minus for chapter ninety. And I would recommend using, putting those towards the next, like a phase project. So we started drainage on one of the main roads we talked about. Uh, South Loomis or Depot or Vine Hill, um, drainage and then, and the paving work, you know, put that into, that may be a two-year project. Unfortunately, the dollars don't go far, so we have to, I like to spread the products out a little bit as well, all over town. So that's why we've done it this way. So we get, you know, on the west side of town, you see some activity and east side of town, you also see some activity. You know, putting all your dollars into one street that not everyone's, you know.
Yeah, are we looking at different processes to, you know, is it always, are we always getting the best or is there cheaper ones we could do that aren't, maybe aren't quite as good? But lasts us ten years instead of twenty or?
Yeah, for the paving program, we, we've identified different types of treatment, type, different types of paving repairs. So the most extensive ones are the reconstruction, where you're basically replacing the whole road and the road base.
Hmm.
Uh, crack seal's a good one. We do crack seal every year. I like crack seal. It's a very positive approach. But you're going to crack seal on roads that are still in, in good condition. You know, road like Anoka Road, you're not going to crack seal.
Right.
Sure. Um, and we have done other surface treatments called microseals, cape seals, which are also very effective. Uh, they, they're wearing surface. They, they protect the asphalt underneath it. And we've done a lot of roads with, with microseals and cape seals over the past couple of years. I would add more to the list, but I think we're kind of capped out right now where we can do those projects. Those roads still need to be in pretty good condition. Uh, but the roads that we've done, if all we needed was crack seal those roads, so win-win. So it's very little dollars maintaining those roads. Once you give them into that condition, really hopefully they get the road all up into a, you know, a good condition road. And then you just crack seal every three, four, five years. And it becomes a very positive effect. But the problem is we have these roads like Anoka, like Davis, that are Vine Hill, that are all very deteriorated.
Right.
You know, you have to do the more cost of repairs. And if you're talking, you know, if you're doing full drainage and full paving, we're talking well over a million, million and a half dollars per mile of road. With eighty miles of road in town. And we get one and a half billion dollars a year for paving. So. And numbers don't go far.
Are these all of the drainage improvements that you know of right now, or are there others of that as well, just further down the list?
These are the ones that I recommend advancing right now. There are other smaller scale projects that we can probably add to the list, but these are just like a start.
Do you still want to do the drive around and?
Absolutely.
See those and?
Absolutely. Good idea. I think you're right. You know, you have to focus in some spaces on, on the busy roads, but there's also roads in town that are getting bad that have been there since the early fifties that we haven't been paying much attention to. Last few years especially, uh, Gargon being the lone exception. Um, we've spent all our powder on major roads, Hillside, um, South Loomis, this will finish off South Loomis.
Um, Feeding Hills Road.
And Feeding Hills Road was, that was a ginormous one. It needed to be done. I get it. But, you know, you get over here in the Burnwood, Birchwood area, right? Those are original construction roads from when those subdivisions went in and they're starting to really need attention over there. In my opinion, we should take a look around and see where else we should be. Looking there and kind of have a balance of, of where we're doing that work. And like I said, there's thirty million dollars worth of work. You could spend that in twenty minutes right now.
Hmm.
If you really wanted to go do it all, but, uh.
No, I know. I just talking with others, there's other processes that are a little cheaper and.
Sure.
You know, like gain.
I, I asked, what do they use in, in Alaska to keep their roads up? Are we using that? Are we using that?
Yeah, I don't know. But I know there's different types of seals. You mentioned some of them, but different towns use different things. Do we do any grinding and paving in-house? Like a lane or?
In-house, no, no grind. We have, uh, we have a little milling chain which can add, I don't know, if we get like a three or four foot wide mill.
Hmm.
Like, like on, on a cutter blade, but we're not doing travel rings.
Is that something that would be worth investing in or?
I think we struggle with the, the work on front of us, with our, with our staff and resources, the equipment we have. The milling is, is actually pretty cheap. It's the paving is the expensive part.
Right.
And things like sheep pasture, South Long Yard, these are ten thousand feet, sixteen thousand feet. Those would likely be broken up into sections?
You could do that for sure.
Okay. Okay, so you want to schedule a little drive through again?
Yes.
When would you like to do that? You want to give us some dates and?
Or even the ball or?
Okay, sure.
Some dates in those.
Okay, and we'll come back to this.
Right.
Give me a warning. I heard I got to buy the coffee.
That's true.
Thought I was getting one coffee before it drops.
I like mine hot though. All right, um, no one else has come into our, um, waiting room? Okay, great. Okay. Then, uh, we can go on to appoint special municipal employees. Um, which is on page five of your additions that were sent today. This will be for the period seven, one, twenty-five through six, thirty, twenty-six. Um, so I just need to read the positions on these. All right, so let me read that list and someone can make a motion to appoint one or all. Cemetery Sexton and Council on Aging Director, Park and Rec and Council on Aging Administrator. Boards, Board of Appeals and Police Department, Department of Public Works. What is S I C?
Sewer Implementation Committee.
Sewer and Sewer Implementation Committee, thank you. Town Planner and Economic Development Director, Conservation Commission and Community Preservation Commission. Any objections up to that point? Any questions up to that point? Okay, all part-time police officers, reserve and traffic control officers, code inspectors, call force firefighter, E M Ts, emergency medical technicians, Planning Board, Park and Rec Commission, C P C Committee. So far, so good. Plumbing inspector, alternate building inspector, clerk of the works, electrical inspector, assistant wiring inspector, alternate electrical inspector, alternate plumbing inspector, alternate plumbing inspector two, park and rec commission and Wally Computer. This was under vendors if I did not say that. Sorry about that. Uh, park and rec commission and Wally Computer, park and rec commission and Community Preservation Committee and Wally Computer. Uh, the town's attorneys and automatic special town employees are Board of Selectmen Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk.
Motion to, uh, make the, those named as special municipal employees for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
That's interesting.
This is for seven, one, twenty five through six, thirty, twenty-six. Still, he's still on stage?
Same.
Okay.
If you split them apart, no problem, but if you're doing.
The first one, first one took them all.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll second that. Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Russ Anderson, stay.
Okay. All right. Uh, okay, then we're getting close, people. Then Chief Stefanowicz, you have a request for the Select Board to support the Safer Grant application. Um.
I do. So the department is applying for the Safer Grant, which is funding from, uh, uh, from FEMA, um, several years, and there are certain criterias and benchmarks that need to be met in order for the grant to be funded. And even though we applied and were pretty diligent about how we applied, uh, we never received the grants. Um, and the grant was for adequate staffing for firefighters, for private emergency responses. So this year with the addition of our recent three new people on the department, uh, for full-time staffing, it gives us three per shift. Um, the grant would be to look to add a fourth member to that shift. Adding that fourth member then needs the NFPA standard of four firefighters rolling out for a fire on the first apparatus. And that would be, uh, within four minutes would meet the threshold of the requirement. So it probably makes it a little bit more likely that we would receive the grant because prior, all of our applications probably wouldn't have even met that criteria. So it really wasn't meeting their goals, although it would be helpful. What's changed dramatically in the last year is the Safer Grant always covered one hundred percent of the costs for the employees in the first year, the second year, and then fifty percent in the third year. This year, the big change is that it's gone to twenty-five percent of the first year, twenty-five percent, and the second year is covered by the federal government. And then the third year is sixty-five percent of it. I'm sorry, I take that back. Twenty-five percent is required by the town in year one and year two. Year three would be sixty-five percent. So the timing is poor because it falls right in the middle of a fiscal year where we didn't anticipate that change in the grant. We've talked about applying for the grant and even adding the people, but this is a little bit sooner. So I'm looking to just at least get permission from the Select Board to pursue the grant. There's no guarantee that we're going to get it. If we get it and it's still not feasible, the, we could decline the grant as well too. So that's kind of where we're at. I just, if the Select Board is, is in the town says, we're not ready for that just yet, and rather not go for the grant and maybe wait till next year. However, we're not sure, and every year we're not sure how much is going to be available for, for federal funding and if this grant is going to be available. My thinking is this is probably going to be our last chance for this grant. So I'd at least like to apply and see what happens. You don't know unless you ask.
Why would it be our last chance?
Because I think the funding is going to go away.
They're so, they say not, but we'll see.
Yeah, so, yeah, a- again, it's, I just don't know. There's a lot of variables involved in it. Um, and it, it could be here for fifteen years. You just don't know. But I, you know, some of the people I talked to said that this could be the last one for, for that type of funding. I think the assistance, firefighting grants would probably still stay intact, but I think the funding for the staff may, might go away.
And when would this be awarded?
Um, it would be probably late summer, early summer, early fall. So, um, those September was what they were looking at. And then you have a hundred and eighty days after the award to hire the people, which still keeps you in this fiscal year.
Chief, what's the, the twenty-five percent town commitment? What's that dollar amount?
So I'm still working on that right now because of the new contract. That's changing a couple of benefits and things, but I'm using eighty thousand dollars as an average.
Not with benefits though. That's, you're just, that's salary.
Yeah, but the problem is it only depends on what benefits they, they accept. So.
So I believe that the grant has a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar cap.
Cap on.
So it's worth case.
Hundred and seventeen thousand, that would be the lowest we could ask.
And you're looking for four?
For four, yeah. But so you'd be covering the cost of one in the first year, one in the second year, and then two plus fifteen percent in the second, in the third year.
Is there typically a fall town meeting or is that give or take? We don't know.
We don't know. We try to do one a year, but that hasn't worked out the last few years.
Well, first, got to get it first.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough grant to get.
I would tend to support it just because I think, you know, it's a natural progression of where we're going and, you know, we can crunch the numbers and figure out if we can actually do it, if, if we somehow get it. We have not been successful getting it to date.
Right.
Um, and, you know, I think it's a, you know, the progression of the department as to where we're going, but I would, I would certainly support the application of a grant. And then worst cases, I'd hate to turn it down because you'll never see it again, but, um, you know.
When it was free, many did. Even when it was a hundred percent and town said nope.
Yeah.
Because they got a, at one point they had a guarantee in year four that you're going to take them.
Correct.
But then they dropped that.
But I, you know, I, I, I think we should support the application to see, see what the result is.
I agree.
Mr. Deaney, did you have any thoughts on that?
I have no thoughts.
Not today?
I have plenty, but I'll keep my mouth shut.
Okay. All right. I have no, I wonder what would happen if you turn it down and you get to apply again if it is a demerit or not, but.
It's top secret. They never tell you. So you just don't, there's, they, when you're declined, they don't tell you why you're declined. They give some hints, you know, what you need to do better next time, but that's all. It's just a structure and that's what it's been for years.
Uh-huh. I have no objection to giving it a go.
So I put forth the motion to support the Safer Grant application.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Russ Anderson, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want you to know how we think of.
Okay.
Good luck.
All right, uh, then we have a one-day liquor license application for the Southwick Inn for six, twenty-eight, twenty-five for their block party or one of these. I'm not on that page and ten, four, twenty, twenty-five. This is difficult to flip.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll just go on the record. I always do on these, these applications. So uh, I work at Wally Computer and there may be some tangential ownership interest in the Southwick Inn from owners of Wally Computer. Anyone has any objection to me voting on a one-day liquor license for the inn? I'll be glad to step aside.
Not I.
Thank you.
Putting it out there.
Thank you. So the six, twenty-eight, Saturday, six, twenty-eight for the block party was from twelve P M to ten P M. Hours of entertainment, one P M to eight P M. And alcohol being served twelve P M to twelve A M. Do you want to do them both together? Bring them both together. And for Oktoberfest, ten, four, Saturday time of four P M to twelve A M, hours of entertainment, five P M to seven P M. And alcohol from seven P M to twelve A M, and these are all outdoor, of course. And I believe everything else from my look seemed to be in order.
Was there?
Yep, signed off.
Make a motion to.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Sanders, yes.
Okay, on the next item, um, we, I think we have to invoke the rule of necessity on this as Select Board members are part of the Rotary members, and I actually participated in this event. as select board members are part of the Rotary members and I actually participated in this event. So so done. Uh, so we need to acknowledge and approve two thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollar donation from H. Hayden, M. Guarco, P. Le Blank, the Rotary Club of Southwick and Southwick Insurance to be deposited in the Animal Control Gift Fund and Southwick Animal Control Medical Gift Fund.
So moved.
Roll call vote Diane Gale, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
And we are acknowledging a letter of resignation from library trustee Jennifer Beldon and mentioned this at our last meeting as well, and this is another elected position that we would have to appoint someone.
They haven't brought anybody.
To fill. Well, actually, uh, there was an applicant. I was going to ask the library trustees um, if they had anyone in the wings. Uh, there was also an applicant who submitted on the portal last week. Did you have any parties?
Traditionally, we always tell the person.
Michael McMahon.
Just person that's that's leaving to file a resignation with the town clerk. Typically, town clerks in the past have notified the two political parties of the opening. And then maybe a name comes forward from one or both of parties. And again, typically, we had a joint meeting of the select board and the library trustees. Full point and typically it's only the one name. Maybe if you really like it, it might be two, just the only one name. And include the person at that point. But the current person resigning is moving on his day.
We can also share the name of the applicant with you. We'll do that. Are you looking that up? Her name escapes me.
Yeah, I saw it the other day. But that's also Mr. McMahon raises a good point. That's general the process when there's a vacancy in an elected position is to notify the political parties before he any board moves to make an appointment. And I don't believe we've done that in any of these cases so far.
Okay. And so we'll share that with you as well, that application. All right, and then uh we are going to acknowledge Carrie Bradbury's resignation from the Southwick Fire Department. Unfortunately, leaves you in another opening.
So um, I received a letter of resignation from Carrie Bradbury. She went with the department since two thousand four, in two thousand and four. Uh, she started as a call member December two thousand and four and was hired as our third full-time firefighter uh E M T in two thousand and seven, November two thousand and seven. Um, Carrie definitely paved the way. It was a true pioneer for the department as well as EMS and fire services when they were joining forces. But more importantly is uh the female firefighter in an era when that was unheard of. Um, so I applaud her efforts and the courage it took to do that. Um, Carrie has had some interest in some other uh avenues for herself and she's going to show some of those going forward. So um, she'll be working this week and she'll last day will be the twenty ninth of June.
I'd like to echo that. I mean, um, she truly was a a trailblazer in town and elsewhere. Um, I believe if she's not the longest standing employee of the Southwick Fire Department, she's a close second. Um, so kudos to her and um congratulations on her future endeavors.
Okay, then, uh, discuss the owner contractor agreement for the elevator project here with Worcester Elevator Company. And again, Russ, you were on this project a little bit and uh, I guess we're just looking for authorization to sign the contract. No one has any issues with it.
I think we we discussed that last week meeting. Make a motion.
Uh, I think it's to have me sign it, right?
Motion for the chair to sign.
This is if you agree, yeah, yeah. Somebody needs to set a second open. Roll call vote Diane Gale, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Russ Anderson.
All right. She's here, okay.
You just saw the meeting dates. Did you want to wait for the?
Excuse me. Their planning board member appears to be in the waiting room or online now.
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So yeah, you probably should and open your joint meeting. Welcome, welcome, welcome Diane.
Jessica Thor and three fifty-two Granville Road, planning board chair.
Jason Grunhold, fifty-seven Granville Road. Planning board chair. Planning board member.
Yeah.
And Diane?
Diane Josbo, one forty-five Feeding Hills Road, planning board member.
So our first one on the agenda is for the full open spot that was recently um, left by Mr. Edsinger. That term would run from now until the next election cycle. And I believe we have one applicant completely unknown for the rest of us, Mr. Phelps, would you like to?
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight depot.
Nice to see you again.
Good evening. Long time no see.
All right, so as we said, as Jessica said, this is to fill an open vacancy. Um, unfortunately, uh, vacated after the election, so no time to um put you on a ballot, I guess, if you were so inclined. Um, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Phelps?
Kind of a legend in his own mind.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I'm grateful that you stepped forward to to fill this role. Very helpful.
I'm just curious, are some of the ongoing projects, were you involved with them? I don't know how fresh things are.
It's been a long time. Some of them keep coming around again, but.
We heard about one fifty-nine Berkshire just this week.
Yeah.
Have you been off?
Uh, let's see, what's the resume say here? Yeah, two years I was uh last on in twenty twenty-three. Yeah. Two long years. Two short years. But we have a full-time planner now. It could be interesting. By being able to work with a full-time planner. And uh, I guess you still need an administrative assistant. I've heard Samantha had.
Yes, we have vacancy there as well. They just keep popping up here. Um, but I'll echo Diane's gratitude for Mr. Phelps' willingness to step forward for those um, listening who aren't familiar. Uh, Mr. Phelps has a extensive resume in many areas, but most especially in planning as well as within the town of Southwick itself, both as a former town planner and planning board chair and vice chair.
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
Never made it.
Never made it to chair. Okay. Um, he also was integral part of our master plan process and.
Chair there.
Yes, chair there. And I look forward to having um, that expertise back on the board.
Any further questions from?
I would just like to thank you as well for stepping forward and um your interest in in rejoining the planning board. Um, I'm very thankful.
Okay, looking for a motion.
I just have one point of order. Is there a reason that we didn't follow the normal convention of notifying the political parties of a vacancy for them to put forth any candidates that they saw fit? No disrespect to Mr. Phelps. I've known Mr. Phelps for thirty-plus years.
Unaware of such a um practice of such, just not aware.
Okay.
Um, personally, I've been recruiting like heck.
Is that a bylaw or something?
No, it's just past practice. We've always done it. No, I wasn't asked. I didn't even know until I saw the agenda tonight that this was on the agenda for this week, so I didn't really get a chance to get in front of it.
Did not know.
Well, barring any objection, I will make a motion to appoint Marcus Phelps to the open position on the planning board. Roll call vote of the planning board, Jessica Thornton, yes.
Jason Grunhold, I.
Diane Josbo, yeah.
Do we make a separate motion or do we go with that?
No, it's a joint appointment. So the motion's made and seconded.
Roll call vote of the select board, Diane Gale, I.
Doug Morgan, abstain.
Russ Anderson, yes.
All right, good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
And of course you need to get sworn in.
Oh.
Before you get sworn in.
Yes.
Never.
All right.
Maybe some other persons.
Next, we have John Giovanni Alsop. Can you join us?
This is for.
This is for an associate position.
Which is a non-voting, right?
It is non-voting unless one of the regular members is unable to participate in a particular application.
For a special permit.
What would be kinds of extension, conflict of interest or not attending enough meetings to hear the entire special permit? But in the past, we've always operated with the idea that the associate member is there at every hearing, at every meeting and participates in asking questions and being part of the deliberation process.
And the two longest-serving associates on the planning board are sitting at this table right now. She being the longest serving.
I knew that. Who's second? Why did I guess?
So this is uh one of two candidates for the associate. Okay, so um, Mr. Also, what would you, how how do you go, John? Um, please, um, I don't know if everybody knows who you are. Can you just give us a little background on information about yourself?
My name's Giovanni Alsop. I work at uh Berkshire Bank down in the street year in town. I heard about this position from some friends who thought maybe it would be a nice way to get to know the community and volunteer. I moved here a year and a half ago. At my job, I deal with a lot of rules and regulations, um, reading things to make up a solution for customers. You know, maybe they want to do something some way, but you can't do it that way. So you find a solution to do it a different way. So I'm used to solving problems and um you know, reading regulations and procedures, laws. So I thought that it would be a good way to get into community and offer something.
Okay, um, have you attended any planning board meetings in the past, in person, remotely, or watched recordings?
I watched some on YouTube. Good, um, I think it was last last week's, June third. So it was interesting. I never seen a planning board meeting before, so.
Okay, you're aware of the times they meet?
Tuesdays, every other Tuesday.
It generally runs every other Tuesday, but that every other gets spread apart and changed due to all sorts of calendars issues between school vacations and holidays and whatnot. So we kind of just say Tuesdays at some.
Questions?
You know how you see somebody and you can't figure out where you know him from? I'm glad he said he worked at Berkshire Bank because I was having a hell of a time trying to figure out where I I recognize you from. So thank you for clearing that for me.
I don't. No questions.
Is there any other board or commission that you've had experience on where you've been a voting member?
No.
No. What community did you come from before?
Hmm, Springfield.
Okay. All right, do you have any issues that you're aware of that the planning board has been dealing with that you look forward to working on or are you just kind of an open book at this point?
I can see what's what. I mean, I read, I listened about um, uh restaurant, tea house, um, cooking outside and um I think that's the one I remember the most. But cooking, you know, that's interesting. You want to dig into look so much to it, but there is.
Right.
Um, the storage space. I don't know anything about them, but that's what I was listening to and see how it goes. I mean, during a meeting, you know, the laws, the rules and things.
Well, that's kind of the biggest part of the planning board is we have to follow all those bylaws and regs and state rulings and court rulings that go back to the eighteen hundreds. So sometimes it's it's a lot less of an opinion than trying to follow the laws and write a defensible decision, so.
And my job too.
Yeah. Lack of passion in the banking, right? There's not not a lot of passion in banking. It's all Reg C and Reg E. Yeah, familiar. Diane? Did you have any questions?
I do not at this time. Thank you. Okay. All right. All right. So if you want to take a seat, we have another person online to speak for you. All right, and then we have Jason Perone.
Hello, everyone. Jason Perone, one Noble Street Crossing.
Hi, Jason.
How are you?
Wonderful. So you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the planning board associate?
Well, I don't know if anyone's familiar with me or not, but um, so my plan uh for the planning board was uh as I think obviously that's just being in jest. Uh, after the three years on the select board, um, I've wanted to stay involved uh regardless of whether I ran or not. Um, the planning board has always interested me um with the impending upcoming zoning uh review bylaws for all the zoning reviews. Um, in my time doing my research and investigating and stuff, both on the board and in my current uh professional aspect, um, I think it puts me in a good position to 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 be around. Um, you know, it gives gives me a unique perspective that uh others don't have. Like I said, when I was on that board, I jumped in with uh headfirst with no water in the pool. This time at least there's a little bit of water in the pool. So uh it's just my way to get back to the community to get just to stay involved.
What was his name again?
He looks a little familiar.
Any questions?
I don't know if that's a good thing.
Uh, how do you uh feel about the scheduling? I know that sometimes in the past, there was some difficulty for you making it to the select board meetings or changing the schedule a little bit. In particular, some of the uh special permit hearings that we have coming up, they're going to necessitate the associate member being available and present. Do you foresee that being an issue for you going forward?
I don't foresee that. Actually, you know, um, it's I I guess our select board is very unique. It it's interesting that a lot of other boards and councils, we meet a lot more um when we're on the select board than a lot of other boards and councils that I'm aware of, but um, no, I don't see any problem at all. Um, unfortunately, I'm going to need another surgery, so I'm going to have plenty of time on my hands. Um, I'll be having that in August um for my shoulder. Um, but I don't see any problems at all whatsoever. Actually, what's good is these the planning boards are later starts, so it's a lot easier for me to make it actually on later starts.
Later starts, later endings.
Well, Mr. Morgan said that I I dragged out this select board meeting, so I'll try not to do that if I get involved with you guys.
Diane? Questions?
No questions for me.
Jason?
All good.
Ms. Josbo?
Uh, no, my question was already asked. Um, and my question was just going to be, what will you bring to the planning board? So thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Do you want to make a motion?
And we did real quick, we double-checked. Jason, I know we talked about this informally and you were going to double-check with um the relevant folks regarding the requisite amount of time that has. The relevant folks regarding the requisite amount of time that has to pass from leaving one board to joining another, correct?
Yes, it's thirty days, so I would not be able to start until the twenty-third.
Could he get signed, sworn in on the twenty-third to then act on the twenty-fourth?
I don't know that we could even make an appointment then until that. At that, at that time. I don't know. And I would err on the side of caution if it were May.
Is that a motion?
Thirty days from the election or thirty days from?
His term officially ended at the close of town meeting, so I would assume that that would been the date. I was running the math in my head, right, as and in that. And I know we had talked about it informally.
Yes.
And I and I I said double-check because that was what I had thought, but. Yeah. That would just my recommendation. I wouldn't want to. Put either any, either of the boards in jeopardy of. Of a, I don't know what that is, if that's an open meeting law violation or some other other violation of something, but.
Actually.
Was that one was, yeah.
Is that, you agree, right? That's, that was my understanding as well, is there's a thirty day.
Oh, yeah, there is a thirty day, just. It's the very minimum.
Correct, and then when was town meeting?
May twenty-third.
Twenty-third, so it would be at least the twenty-fourth of June before we should.
Okay.
I I would think.
I'm looking at the regulation right now and it doesn't say as far as. Says I can't start for thirty days, but it doesn't say as far as the appointment, so.
Sorry.
Yep.
Right, twenty. So it'll be the twenty-first, five days from now.
Yes, I wouldn't be, okay, I've got it right here, not eligible for appointment to another town until after a thirty-day waiting period.
So we couldn't make an appointment. Unless we were going to nominate the point, Mister. I I mean, I I think Jason should be eligible. When we discuss it as a group and and then make a motion to vote. I don't want it to be a foregone conclusion here at all, right? I think um. That'd be my advice, and that would be my position on it.
I agree.
So do we reconvene a joint meeting next Monday? Uh, that would be the twenty-third, which would have been thirty days post.
When's your next meeting?
The twenty-fourth, so he would. Who whoever would need to be appointed would be need to be appointed. Monday evening to then make their way to town hall, hopefully. Sometime during the day on Tuesday, if not, we ask Christine to, or Christine.
Or it's today with an effective date of six twenty.
I think the the board members are suggesting that we can't discuss. And make. That decision until the thirty-day cooling off period. And so. And I can't argue against that either.
Nor can I. I believe I actually sent that to you, did I not, Jessica?
A screenshot, yeah. AI answers.
We are meeting.
Wow, yeah, I know, AI.
Well, I was gonna say.
I mean, in fairness to Mister Alsop too.
Correct, we have another candidate.
Absolutely, you know, I'm not here to hold up the board by any means.
I would make a motion to appoint. Giovanni Alsop. As the. Associate member, six seventeen twenty-five to six thirty twenty-five, and then seven one twenty-five to six thirty twenty-six. Since we do like persons who have never served on a board before. And are interested in. Bettering the town. And I think his skills with the banking, regulation, legalities. Um evaluating projects all fit this. As well. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You want to call a roll call on your side?
Planning board roll call, Jessica Thornton, I. Diane?
Diane Josba, no.
Jason?
Jason, I'm all done.
Select board, Diane Gell, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Russell Anderson.
We have to math.
It's not enough.
It's three to three, right?
Three to three, so yes, so we'd have to come back to.
We'll have to come back on Monday, rediscover, and potentially Mister Spina will be available to attend at that time as well, and if there is a stalemate or. A decision to make, then we'll have enough votes to have a super majority. Do my board members have availability next Monday before we confirm that?
I do. I do. And do you think David does?
I'll have to text him. And if not, we'll we'll be back here, but we'll have a perhaps a different perspective with it being after the timeframe, I don't.
Yeah.
That may change some people's hopes, I think. That was the process.
Hundred percent.
Held up some of it.
Yeah.
Or we could need a different day this week if necessary.
Not before the twenty-first.
You can't. You couldn't, until Monday would be the soonest anyway.
Yeah, with the holidays.
Oh. Okay. So we need a motion to continue this.
Yeah, just carries under old business, right, to close us down?
To do any, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
It's not a joint public?
It's not.
Is there anything else for the? Planning board with us this evening?
No, wasn't that enough?
Why not?
You want more?
Sure.
There'll be more coming, I'm sure.
So then you would just move to adjourn the planning board meeting?
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thornton, I.
Jason, I'm all done.
Diane Josba, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week.
That's fine, we'll do it.
Thank you.
So Mister Alsop, we're gonna re-reconvene next Monday. At right, I guess we're gonna be next Monday now, next Monday and continue the discussion. Thank you very much.
All right. And then. We left off at. Any other new business? Okay. Under. Old business. Um. Doug, you want to continue discussion on? Did we skip the calendar?
Oh, no, that's coming up next, sorry. I'm sorry, you want to discuss?
Just, just we put it on there, you know, last week you talked about, you know, just to be able to carry it through.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll give you the brief update for this week, um. I was supposed to have a meeting last week with. The contracted provider. And we couldn't all get our act together. I was a little jet lagged. They were, they were a person short, so we're gonna get together this week. Would decide or to discuss. If um. There's even a viable project within the parameters that we have in front of us, and then what? Next steps could or should look like, and then I will come back to this board to figure out how we should. Oh, figure a way forward.
Okay, then the calendar. Are there any dates that anybody is unable? To be here?
Didn't you say in past we we did every other per summer?
Yes, um and around holidays. They're actually, the holidays are not on here. Those holiday weeks weren't even on here.
Was there a need for every week? Through the summer, I guess is the question.
Not usually.
So do we?
Then we can always call one if there is some.
Yeah, doing every other and call up a need to.
Yeah, I have nothing really on my calendar right now that worse in contrary to those dates, I was gonna suggest maybe we don't meet on the. Fourth, seventh?
Seventh, right.
Yeah, with the the fourth being on a Friday.
Correct.
Fourth is on a fourth this year.
Here's a first.
So that would be the holiday week.
Right.
Then July twenty-first. No meeting, August fourth, no meeting. August eighteenth, no meeting.
So basically you're doing the second and fourth Mondays.
Yeah, until the holiday messes it up. And then Labor Day, there is no meeting scheduled. So it go, we would meet August twenty-fifth. There's a week off for Labor Day.
Then that's the first.
Yep.
And then we usually go right back to every week, right after Labor Day.
Beginning there, yeah.
Right, we could skip Labor Day and start the eighth.
Yeah.
Yep, so we will meet June twenty-third and June thirtieth.
Something comes up. Cool.
Okay. And then we go back to every, except for holidays. Okay.
You want to meet on the thirtieth too? Twenty-third and thirty?
Yeah, because then we're gonna skip the week of the seventh for the holiday.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Okay, and then other old business master plan. Um, climate change prioritization. You guys got that?
I got it, I finished it.
Okay, and are you, did you get to the? Select board priorities?
Oh, just reviewing it.
Okay. All right, so I'm just gonna bring that up every week because eventually we're gonna have to put this on our agenda to carry out. What ends up being our priorities? Based on our input.
So one question I have as far as priorities is. Are you basing the board's only priorities on the master plan or things within the master plan?
What do you mean?
It's a good point.
So does? Does the master plan become the foundation for what the board wants to work on or accomplish?
No, it's what is in the master plan that we would prior, on our lead actions. What is in the master plan? That we would prioritize as our, that's okay. As our top priorities and and we did it individually and it will be weighted and we will discuss that and we could change our minds. Based on discussion.
But we pick one, two, and then. Go completely suffer?
I think. I may, I think. The master plan. We should set goals and objectives as a select board. For things that we want to work on. That may or may not be part of the master plan. The the master plan does not tell us how we run the select board. It's. It's an overarching goal of, you know, yeah, peer vision for twenty forty, but there's other things certainly we should and.
We'll never get to twenty forty.
No, I I had it on my list of of things. I'm glad you brought it up because I think it's something we should bring forward. Either at our next meeting and kind of, we used to have a list of goals and objectives. We haven't probably looked at it in a while, probably. Send back out. And then as a board, discuss what our goals and objectives should be. Um. For this coming year.
Including what?
Including, you know, you know, one of them is sure is some, there's gonna be some master plan priority items on there, but there's other things. That are challenging the town that are not. In the master plan.
Correct. Correct.
No, that's, that was my.
Without goals when we didn't have a master plan. Of course not, no.
Okay.
But there are other boards and committees that are waiting for us to establish something so they can carry out theirs.
Right.
And we can't ignore those either. Yes, ma'am?
No, I mean, I could also create something, you know, with um. Different categories for you to um, you know, things that we do on a daily basis or, you know, that are the responsibility of select board, our select board office. To try to come up with um. Other goals and objectives specifically for us and for me.
Yeah, because that's another phase of it.
That's, yeah, that's the next logical step through that too, right, absolutely.
Yeah, great, I can work on that. I have been already.
Okay, um, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask you, did you have any other new business?
No, thank you.
Any other old business?
Thank you.
They, did you have any new or old business?
I have, um, you know, it's. One or two of me and the select board members. And concerning appointment to emergency management.
And you would get my email?
Yes, and um. Discuss that with Nicole and we were gonna. Address that when we go through the rest of the holidays.
Good point.
Um, normal appointments.
Right, they were right there, that's why.
Right, so I was just making sure we were meeting next week and the week after, so that we, that's where I want to schedule those remaining appointments.
So. I know Ian's here and Jerry's here, I don't know if you want to take advantage of that, why they're here. Or if we could.
If it was not, if it wasn't posted, we can't, can we?
Well, things that aren't anticipated by the chair, you can, as long as you weren't, you didn't expect this at all.
Is that appropriate if we didn't?
Well, I think, have you resigned as the emergency management director?
Yeah, I I've emailed um practice at the end of them.
I mean, you can certainly make an interim. Uh, in my opinion. You could make an interim appointment to a date certain so that there is an emergency management director. Lord, we can't schedule emergencies for goodness sake, so. Um, and then. Thank you, thank you, Mister McMahon, I do appreciate that, and we could. Then revisit this as part of the regular process that we go through. This was. Emergency management director is a stipend. Position. It's not a regular appointment. The appointment to emergency management is part of the regular appointment, but the emergency management director is not. So I think if there's.
Does that fall under the direct, the um. Chairman? Like, you know, not a department head, or is that, it is a conservative department?
Ha, I don't know. It's got the rector in the title.
Yeah, probably is.
Probably is.
Well, and your resignation was June thirtieth.
Correct.
Is effective June thirtieth?
Yeah, end of them, because I figured it would coincide with the appointment process. But if you need to move it, you could too.
I I have no objection.
Give me a pen, I'll do it immediately.
No, I think this is. Um. Uh, it gives us, now it gives, now it gives you time to carry it to next me, at least next meeting on the agenda, and then it'll give you time to 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 to. To have a a unorderly transition, right? We could make an interim appointment. Or an appointment for July one. We can carry this, notice it for our next meeting. I mean. Uh, Mister White's done yeoman work as the vice chair. He had applied to be the chair, deferred to uh. Yep, select board member Anderson now was Anderson at the time, right, to to um. Based on experience, which was a couple of years, a couple, three years ago, right, so.
And I, and I, what I did express that I'd. Like to be the uh liaison to them, so you know, he'd express an interest in helping.
Oh, hundred percent.
So I'm I'm all in favor of that, you know. Just to keep consistency. Help where he needs it. This will get us through motocross and that.
And the block party.
So is that a resignation today and we would appoint today to six thirty?
I think you, I think it's fine to go to, I I think it, sorry, I I was. I think it would be fine to go to six thirty.
Six thirty.
And then this way you can, but next week, since that takes a little bit of pressure off. You could then carry this as an agenda item next week, we're meeting anyway. We could make the appointment if we'd like to. Um.
Next week.
Correct, whi- which would have an effective date of, you know. July one, but that gives you opportunity to put it on the agenda, which probably alleviates some of your concern. I did see Mister White was raising his hand over there.
And Ian White, thirteen Richfield Terrace, um. Wanted to thank you for considering me for Ian Director. And also to uh. Raise the uh issue of Jerry Sandbrook needs appointment. I believe you can do that, but not this time.
We did that. Did we not?
I don't.
Before you were.
I know his name came up and there was, there was something with the page.
Waiting till July first to.
Was that it, under the, the July, I know there was, I think we appointed him.
Effect.
The fact of July, there was, yeah, we had a little mix-up on something, yeah.
We we did, and then we only appointed him to June thirtieth, so we're gonna pick him up again the next year, July. Yes, ma'am?
Jerry Sandbrook, one oh four South Loomis Street. Um, how it was read to me was. I have a temporary appointment. And I am supposed to meet with you folks again prior to. July first, and then after July first is sworn in again. That's how it was.
Correct, we we did it for the remainder of this current year, correct.
And you're interested to continue to serve beyond the end of June?
Not if it's with him.
You're after our debacle of getting on.
Okay, that is correct, that is how I understand it as well.
I'm glad someone had it right.
Okay. So, so you are. You are active through six thirty. Seven one, we start a new year and reappoint you for a full year.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Then the question becomes, uh, some of the question that was part of all that was, do they have to come before the board? As a new member.
Again?
Well, he didn't come before the board. I don't believe.
He just did.
He, he just.
Fair, but qualified, I'm all for it.
Then we know he's a live person. It says
Yeah.
love on his shirt.
I like, I like less, so just move with it then.
So, yeah, so just, the only advice I would give you is go on the portal on the select board webpage and indicate your interest on that portal to serve on SEMA slash races.
I'll send you the link to it.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Anyone who's on that board should, should, that, that's up for reappointment, should put, put their names in. That way we have it and we don't mess it up.
I'll send that to the whole group.
Yeah, okay. All right. Very good.
My guarantee.
All right.
That's it?
That's it for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good one.
Um, okay, then we want to acknowledge payroll warrant number two five two six dated June third, twenty twenty-five in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, two sixty-three and sixty-three cents. And acknowledge payable warrant number two five three zero B dated June tenth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, five thirty-four and sixty-six cents. And if no other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone? Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Yes, Anderson, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.